Thank you, everybody, for participating in the breakout sessions. We're going to go through the groups, so we'll start with Group 2 on the feedback from the packet. Jackie Spreid.
Thank you. So, can you all hear me in the back?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the answer to the first question, do you agree with the recommendation to accept the $4.2 million offer from the city of St. Pete for the St. Pete Wellness Center? The answer was unanimous yes. There was comments around the proposal that this be used for affordable housing as a positive, and the estimation of the number of units, including the total cost for those units, was higher and more reasonable with the total number of units that they would be able to build on that site. So, that was the comment there. For number 2, are there any drawbacks to the reversion of Vet Tech Center to Pinellas County? And if not, do you recommend that the board vote to divest or revert property at the upcoming board meeting? The answer was that there was one drawback, which was declared in the MOU that there was support for the reversion, again, being cautious of what the details, depth on the details, you know, there was what kind of operational costs, who has to do what, and that type of thing. And then, number 3, do you recommend the board vote to divest the properties at Allstate and HEC by simple sale at the next board meeting through RFP process for brokers, and which would be a subsequent RFP for sale? And the answer was yes, to agree on the bid for RFP for brokers for Allstate and HEC. There was a note that we could consider, should consider, separate RFPs potentially for the properties, while it may be a cost savings upfront, that the backend could result in additional funding with separate RFPs. And we were fortunate to have Melissa Gonzalez in our team, who had some experience with this, with Bank of America, so I wanted to thank her for some of that feedback, but that was a consideration. So, again, approve, you know, supporting of the approval of moving forward with both RFPs, but consider separate RFPs potential.
Thank you.
That's my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Group 3, Amal.
Hi, thank you, Dr. Hunt. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. Group 3, we're going to be kicking it off here. So, we unanimously agreed with the recommendation for $4.2 million for the city of St. Pete. A pillar of this college is economic mobility. And a really big draw that we saw with it, this offer is the affordable housing aspect. And moving forward, having affordable housing in or around or near our college is only a boost for us in the last year. We're reminding them how great we are. Number 2, for the Vet Tech question, we also agree that we should continue with the reversion of the Vet Tech Center. I think a really important bullet point on the prompt is that the state of Florida conducted an audit. They said that this program is not, does not meet the conditions of medium or high pay income. That means that something has to change. We have to change how this program is offered. So, it's important, moving forward, we still, there are still certain caveats. We still think it's important to have first right of access for our students and faculty. And we have to identify equipment that might be grant funded, so that moving forward as we do equipment upgrades or equipment renovations, we know where that kind of burden falls on. And on number 3, yes, we should have an RFP for, or do an RFP for the broker. And we did have a question, Dr. Hunt, you were helpful on this, how the parcels will be parsed? Because the driving range and the gun range are still a little bit more valuable, and we just don't know really what to do with that moving forward, is our understanding on that. So, we were a little bit on that. So, that's our Group 3 report. Would love to field any questions as well.
Thank you.
Of course.
Excellent. And then, Group 1.
I will be reporting for the trustees. So, thank you all, and sorry that it took us a little bit more time to flush out our consensus answers. And we had Trustee Givens on the phone with us, and he was in an airport traveling, so we were also listening to, kind of, had a delay there. But as to the Wellness Center, we actually had a little bit of a different tact. And while we agree that the city of St. Pete is the most immediate return, we asked if we could go back to Third Lake specifically, knowing their track record of success, and rework their proposal to something that probably is more reasonable for approval, but perhaps could generate more dollars and would take the college out of the, kind of, middle of any type of approvals on that site. We agreed that affordable housing was a use, but we also wanted more details from the city as to what the AMI and what that meant, because we did not want to create a situation that was a contrast between housing built on this property versus what the neighborhood would expect. And so, we wanted to ensure that whatever the city is proposing is something that would fit into the neighborhood, benefit the college, is there a first right of refusal on units to college staff and faculty and students? Or is it simply, is the city just going to flip it to a different developer? So, we just wanted more of those details before we would commit one way or the other. Our recommendation on Vet Tech was similar to both of the other groups, that yes, we want to move forward on the reversion with the assurances from the county of complete access to the lab area, and that all the equipment is there, and the facilities are necessary for our actual academic program, but that having, there is a great positive of having those students on an actual campus and having access to the student affairs side of being part of the college. Finally, with Allstate and HEC, absolutely, we should go out for a broker RFP. We also are supportive of the simple sale, but we would like a lot more input into whatever, once we get that broker, what the RFP would look like to invite bids for those properties. And I will repeat it, I know Janet and Dr. Williams know, but we have been working so hard for the past 3 years to find a place to relocate the driving range, so we could facilitate the sale very easily and quickly. So, if anybody has 10 acres not next to a single-family residential neighborhood in their back pocket that we can buy, because that's one of the other things, is the purchase price on this property, if we ended up having to buy 10 acres someplace else, it kind of defeats the purpose. So, so those are the things that we talked about. Happy to answer any questions.
Wow.
Nice consensus.
It was great consensus, and good job, Janet and team. I definitely appreciate the detail. I know you've had to bring this, like, for the last 3 years forward. And of course, we made no decisions today, because this is a workshop. And that is why we sought feedback from the college community on our next steps going forward with this. And it is critical. And there's a lot to think about as we move forward. And so, I appreciate you guys taking the time to look at the detail and provide feedback. And in February, we'll be discussing this more and bringing some proposals to the board to consider. We may or may not be bringing the Wellness Center in February because of some of the feedback of further research that we've been asked to do, but I think the others should pretty much be brought back to the board in February unless the board thinks otherwise. All right. Good deal.
Okay.
So, next, we're going to talk about the fiscal health of the organization.
Ready?
Yes.
Well, I'm back again. So, each year, we do an annual Financial Health of the College. I am very excited about this year, because it really is going to, and you'll see in the presentation, that it shows the partnership that the finance team, finance and budget team, had with some of our colleagues, with academic affairs and with student services. And you'll really get to see through this journey. We're going to start out with the past of where we landed the last fiscal year. We're going to talk about the present and a little bit about the future with the budget, and then really lead into how we're really wanting to invest in ourselves and our students with Dr. Kelly Zmac and Mr. Dewan Fox. And so, one, I just want to start off with saying thank you again. I know I said that with the facilities, but the team, Dr. Hector Laura, Mike Meggs, and all of the finance team, and everybody that contributes in the process, because it really does take the whole college to really move numbers when it comes to the financial statement and our position. We're still in a very good position, so I'd like to report that. And also, I want to say thank you too, because we had another perfect financial audit of our last financials, so. So, we will start off with Mike Meggs for the financial ratios.
You want to?
Sure.
Good morning. Thank you.
Good morning.
Thank you for letting us share some very strong financial results with you all.
I need the microphone.
Okay. Also, I'd like to thank the entire accounting staff for all of their hard work and due diligence. It takes a village, like Janet said, to really have that perfect audit. And I think, honestly, I think we have the best team in the state of Florida, and I think our results match that. All right, so we have a lot of financial data this year, so let's get started. All right, first, we're going to take a look at total net position. Total net position increased by $24.7 million, primarily due to adjustments to our other post-employment benefits, what we call OPEB. This significant change in liability shifted because of our transition from self-insurance to the consortium. Next, we're going to take a look at net capital assets. Our net capital assets decreased by $9.5 million this year, which was attributable to depreciation expense of $12 million, which was offset by some additions. Next, we're going to take a look at our debt administration. Our overall debt decreased by $2.1 million to $13.5 million, continuing the college's commitment to reducing our debt to zero. The college will be paying down approximately $3.5 million in capital leases this fiscal year, which aligns with our spending plan that we submitted to the state back in September. All right, next, we're going to take a look at our key performance indicators, and how SBC compares to the higher education industry benchmarks. The first indicator is the primary reserve ratio. This ratio provides a snapshot of financial strength and flexibility by indicating how long the institution can function using its expendable reserves without relying on additional net assets generated by operations. The college has made significant changes over the past several years to right-size our budget and right-size our reserve, providing stabilization and flexibility to move forward with institutional strategies and initiatives. SBC's primary reserve ratio for fiscal year 2022 came in at 64.6%, and for comparative purposes, last year it was 51.4%, and 3 years ago it was 33.8%. So, the benchmark for this ratio is greater than 40%, so the goal will be to continue to maintain that over 40% ratio. So, very strong numbers there. All right, next, we have the current ratio. This ratio measures the liquidity of an institution. This calculation takes total current assets over total current liabilities. SBC's current ratio at June 30, 2022, came in at 3.87, which interpreted simply means for every dollar of liability coming in, there's $3.87 to pay for it. The higher education target rate is at least 2.0, so SBC exceeds the benchmark and affirms the strength of our balance sheet. Next, let's take a look at our debt ratio. This ratio measures the extent of an institution's leverage. It is defined as the ratio of total debt to total assets, and is considered the proportion of an institution's assets that are financed by debt. SBC's debt ratio at June 30, 2022, came in at .038, or 3.8%, which is well within our industry standards. For comparative purposes, SBC's debt ratio 5 years ago was 7.7%. For fiscal year 2122, the bonds were refinanced at a better rate, and we paid, the college paid off the Allstate Center Schiller Plan. Over the next 3 years, this ratio should decline to about 2%, assuming we take on no additional debt. Lastly, we have the capitalization ratio. This ratio measures the flexibility, financial flexibility of the institution by not only looking at the current period's return on net assets, but the accumulated return from previous periods. SBC's capitalization ratio came in at 55.8%. The higher education target for this is actually less than 50%. So, the high capitalization ratio implies that an institution could be investing too heavily in physical assets. With the real estate analysis and a focus on optimizing asset and space utilization to better serve our students and our academic mission, increase efficiencies and reduce costs, this ratio should fall within the benchmark, I would say, over the next 3 years. Are there any questions on the KPIs?
Great work.
Great. All right. Next, we're going to take a look at the college's operating cash and cash equivalents. At June 30, 2022, SBC's operating cash and cash equivalents totaled $45.3 million, comprised of the following: $18.4 million in Florida Prime Investment Pool administered by SBA, or the State Department Administration; $16.7 million invested in the State Treasury's Special Purpose Investment Fund; $1.8 million in certificates of deposit; and $8.4 million in cash to support our operations. Total cash, cash equivalents, and investments for all funds totaled $83.4 million. And for comparative purposes, 2016-17, as you can see on the chart, operating cash totaled $10.9 million, and has steadily increased over the past 5 years. By right-sizing our budget, additional state funding, and HERF grant loss of revenue recovery, the college has an exceptionally strong and healthy cash flow, and is very well positioned for a soft landing coming off of the pandemic and HERF funds as of next year. Are there any questions?
No, I just want to thank you and Janet over the years for showing us how to move this forward and get us in the right position. And for those out in the audience, all the hard work that you guys have done to help right-size the budget and increase our cash so that we can move forward regardless, has been just amazing. And I want to thank you. And I know it's not been easy, and I know it's been challenging, because we've had to really look at what we have and what we really need. We've had to reinvent things. We've had to change, transition, transform. We've had to be creative and innovative, and now we're in a position to move forward and do things that we really want to do. And so, thank you for the hard work that you have put in, and all the whining at the water cooler, and all the complaints in the lunchrooms. Just thank you for continuing to hold steady in moving us forward. Thank you. Absolutely.
Sorry, sorry. Absolutely, you're good. I've said this before, when I first got on the board, this was a major, major issue that kept me up at night quite often. The amount of change that we've made, and I know it seems like a long time, but in such a short amount of time, is pretty amazing, especially when you consider all the limitations we have as an institution that's funded by the state, where rules come down by the state that change every year. It's not as easy as being a small business or a private company, where you can pivot and flex and move and change things on a whim. This took so much work by everyone, and the results are, you know, quite truthfully, way better than I ever imagined they would be 6 years ago. So, just to echo Dr. Williams, thank you all. I mean, every year, we see, you know, more and more and more and more movement in the right direction, and it's fantastic.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Hector Laura.
May I show I look at it closely, because somebody is loud sometimes. Well, first, good morning, Chair Tewol for trustee and Dr. Williams. As always, I'd like to take the opportunity to be here today. We have to look back in order to move forward, correct? So, the following financial describe our operating budgets of December 31st. In revenue for this term, for state funding, we received $36.6 million, or 40.27% year today. Starting in February, we're going to receive our allocation of the lottery, which totaled $2.54 million for the remainder of the fiscal year. There is $2.4 million that came in the appropriation state funding for the nursing pipeline, that however, those funds will be distributed as a grant. So, neither the revenue or the expenses will be recorded within the operating. We brought $27.2 million for the state student tuition and fee, which is 71.63% year today of the total budget. We still have enrollment for the 12-week express sections, second-week sections, and also you have summer full term and the 8-week section during the summer. We have $3.8 million from other revenue, which include interest, dividend, indirect costs, and use of facilities. When you look at fund transferring, we have $542,000. And for transfer for our reserve, we expect it to be conducted near the end of the fiscal year. There's some areas that receive some funding from the spending plan, and they're going to be accounted at the end of the fiscal year. Our total revenues of this term is $78.3 million, or 47.73% year today. When you look at the donor chart to the left, you can see the actual revenue category. And when you look to the right, you can see the distribution by the original budget. Do you have any question about the revenue? All right, let's move into the expenses. A quick reminder, I just want to remind you that during this presentation, expenses represent instructional and administrative functions. So, as of this period, we have $67.2 million for the expenses. On the donor chart to the side, to the right side, you can see the actuarial department. Instructional function, we spent $45 million, or 67.13%. And when you look at administrative function in the green one, we spent $22 million, or 32.87%. On the bar graph to your right, you can see that $52.1 million is associated with salaries and benefits, representing 42% of the total budget of personnel expenses. For the expenses in capital, we have $15.11 million, representing 35% of the total budget of current capital expenses. Moving into instructional expenditures, which consists of the college-wide expenditures related to instructional activity. As of December 31st, we spent $45.1 million. For this, $41.1 million is associated to salaries and benefits, and represent 23.5% of the total budget for instructional expenditures. Current and capital expenses, we have $4 million. We represent 23.5% of the total budget. Moving into the administrative function, which is considered activities undertaken to provide necessary services to the college-wide. As of December 31st, we incurred $22.09 million, of which $10.9 million is related to salaries and benefits, representing 41% of the total administrative functions. For current expenses and capital expenditures, we incurred $11.2 million, or 43% of the corresponding budget. As of December 31st, our total revenue is $78.31 million, representing 47.73% of the year-to-date revenue, and expenses are $67.21 million, or 40.96% year today. As of December 31st, that we saw in a positive variance, about $11.11 million. You can see the bottom chart to the left is going to show you the instruction actuals and budget, and the graph to the right is going to show you the administrative actuals and budget. Any question about the revenue expenses as of December 31st? All right, now let's take a look at the projected year-end projection as of December 31st. When you look at the donor chart, this is another revenue allocation for the fiscal year 2023, for which $91 million for 55.6% of the revenue correspond to state funding, followed by $52 million for 31.7% for the student tuition and fee. $11 million for other revenue, or 7%, and there is $8 million for our reserve, which include the spending plan and $1.5 million for the front transferring. As you just saw a minute ago, our revenue and expenses as of December 31st constitute 47.73% for the revenue, and for the expenses, 40.96%. In this particular scenario, our projected revenue year-end totaled $156.22 million. And this is a scenario that is a 5% decrease in all tuition revenue and fee for the current budget, or about probably $2.6 million. I would like to remind you that we forecasted a 10% decline in enrollment in relation to last year. So, last year was about $5.8 million different, but this year in relation to last year. For the state funding, there's also $2.4 million for the pipeline, that it was accounted as a general appropriation, so it was going to come to the operating, but that's been handled as a grant, so therefore, neither the revenue or the expenses will be in the operating budget. The transfer from the spending plan approved by the board for our reserve is tentative, since we have to incur the expenses before we can transfer for our reserve, and that's about $4.7 million. We are looking forward to a form to be completed by those area supervisors that receive this funding to make sure that we can account for the transfer at the end of the fiscal Our auxiliary fund is funded by the bookstore commission, vending commission, and royalty, and we expect it to fully transfer the $1.5 million. Do you have any question about the revenue projections? And our personal benefit, we value $121.15 million, and we expect it to use $110.70 million. This is a result of the current banking positions, some personnel expenses related to the pipeline funding that were accounted for in the operating, but now they're going to be outsourced to the current, and some changes for the compensation study increase that increase upon a lot. For current expenses, we value $41.84 million, and we expect you to spend about $34.64 million. We have some savings in materials and supplies, utilities, travels, and other current expenses. But I would like to remind you again that some of the expenses that were in the nursing pipeline, and some of the spending plans are not there yet, some of the spending plans are going to come towards the end of the year, towards the end of the fiscal year, and we have to keep into consideration that they have to be included. Some of the issues we have is time. Even though you have the money, you don't have enough time to put some of these ideas or strategies to put into place before the year ends. Another thing that we incurred in this one is, we received some funding for the general appropriation. They came as a current expenses, but they have to be followed accounting principles, and they're going to have to be recorded as a capital expenditures. So, there is a direct correlation between the expenses that were in current expenses, but we have to record as a capital expenditures. If you look at what capital expenditures, we value $1.87 million, and we are projected to spend about $3.25 million. As I just mentioned, some of the changes have a direct correlation between current expenses and capital expenditures, and there are some additional active capital payments related to the spending plan that have to be recorded on the capital expenses. Overall, our total revenue projection is $156.2 million, or 95.2%, and for expenses, we have $148 million, about 90.2%, which resulted in a positive variance of about $8.1 million. I would like to remind you that this positive variance, it does include a recovery for the loss of revenue, about $4.8 million. This is the last year to claim the loss of revenue. Any question about the projections? Thank you, and I will let Janet Hunt, our VP for Finance and Business of Creation.
So, I really just wanted to take this time to recap on what we've done. And one is, we just talked about the facility assessment and master planning that will definitely impact our financial position. One, by being able to realign as we improve our utilization, it will really help us with our operating costs and make sure that we're spending the operating costs on spaces that we're actually utilizing. We continue with our modified zero-based budgeting, which really, every year, it is to, for us to really think about what we need for the upcoming year. I believe all 27 other colleges still use the traditional budgeting method, which is you just roll the dollars over every single year. We continue to work with our budget managers and leaders to say, what do you actually need going forward? And that's why you see the results that you see in the budget every year. We also have started development and implementation of a enterprise performance management system, which will really interact with our PeopleSoft financial system. It's really to bring more transparency to our financials and from a management standpoint. A lot of the things that we put together are through Excels, and it's, you know, by the next day, it's almost outdated. And so, we really want to have real-time information and be able to give managers and leaders the ability to go in and see things. and leaders the ability to go in and see things at a real time to make decisions. We also hosted an event that really focused on inclusiveness of our suppliers in September. And we continue to focus on overall financial viability indicators throughout the year. Each month, Hector's team, they meet with a lot of the budget managers, they go over a lot and really discuss a lot of the indicators and some of the other groups. What's next? So we know there's lots of talk about the state funding model. I know that we'll really want to see what this legislation brings out, so we'll be monitoring that very closely and see how that impacts us. We have more to come on the facilities master plan. As Mike mentioned, the soft landing on the CARES funding. We did a lot of investment in technology and a lot of other things with that funding, and really, what do we need to incorporate in our operating costs going forward? Next, we'll continue with looking at more financial impacts. One of the other things that that system will help us do that we want to implement is forecasting in a more long-term, so we can look at three, four, or five years information. And then also, what you'll see up next is how we want to invest into our future. You heard Hector mention the decline that we've had in enrollment, which is not unique to SPC, but we really kind of pulled together a group committee to talk about what does that really look like for us in the future? And how can we invest in enrollment and ensure that we are being productive in our finances? And with this funding that we have, how do we really leverage it for the future? And so next up is going to be Dr. Kelly Zemack, and she's going to talk about the student service component of that.
Excellent. Thank you. So as Shannon mentioned, we have a revenue strategy committee meeting. And this is a cross-functional group who really came together to talk about the student success initiative program and how to utilize these funds. So we realized that in utilizing these funds, we really need to align not only our strategic plan, but outcomes of recruitment and completion. The first program that we decided on was the Promise Scholarship. The Promise Scholarship targets students who graduate from a high school in one of the five low-income zip codes. So that's going to be Target Springs, Clearwater, Tennesse Park, Northeast, and Lakewood. And what we're doing is, we're having, what we're requiring on the students is that they must register in the fall immediately following graduation. We don't want there to be any type of gap in enrollment. This is very similar to other promise scholarships around the state. We also are requiring them to enroll in at least six credit hours, and this would be in the fall and the spring. They are allowed to register in the summer, we will pay for summer, but we're not requiring them to enroll in the summer. The promise is that they do these two things, is that we will pay all their tuition fees up until the end of the third academic year for their first associate's degree. So with this is an alliance for our SPC outcomes of completion within 150% if they complete within the third academic year, and our commitment to economic ability. Any questions on the Promise Scholarship? I'm going to turn it over to Dwan, who's going to talk about the College of Promise.
How many scholarships do you anticipate local-wise?
Yeah, so I have some numbers here for you. I'm overestimating, I like to overestimate. So we're looking about probably a little less than 1,000 if you're overestimating.
Wow, which is pretty cool.
Amazing.
That's amazing.
Thank you.
And thank you for the opportunity today to spend some money, Dr. Williams, and talk about how we can... Not at all. So the second piece of our Promise Scholarship program is a Promise Completion. And that'd be the same thing, looking back at our students in those five low-income zip codes that are 12 credits, really close to the finish line, that may have even stopped out from the college, and helping them get across that finish line by paying for those final 12 credits hours of completion. Of course, this will help us meet our completion target of 150%, but also engages back with those students that we have lost. So these stopouts that have been away from our year, so we're going to bring them back in and get them across that finish line. We have worked really closely with financial aid to really increase the last mile scholarship. So this is just another opportunity to service those students.
This one is just as critical as the one Dr. Zemack talked about. Saturday, I was literally at a funeral, and one of the young men who worked for the funeral home came over to me, and he said, "Are you Dr. Williams?" I said, "Yes." He said, "Thank you for the scholarship, I'm going to finish." The advisor told me, "They're paying for it." And so I'm like, "What?", you know, like surprise, right? But he waited for me after the funeral to say, "My life is going to change because of this. I had no money, and I needed help." And I'm just standing there surprised. It is a game changer, and so thank you guys for coming up with this idea. So he has already given me his son's phone number. I'll be giving it to you, Dr. Zemack, to follow up, to come to school.
Absolutely. That's great. And we had some data running, and we looked at the last four years of students in OZCO. We found 140 students right now that we can apply these funds to and be able to get them across the stage.
Wow, that's great.
And that's our Promise Completion. Any questions?
Excellent job.
I just want to add one again, thank you to the group. There's so many people in here that was part of that committee, Sabrina, Dr. Hayfer, also Joe Leopold, and many others. The objective of the group was all of our departments do a very good job at what their task to do, but it was to bring all those pieces together, also help with the funding model that may come out. You saw completion, you saw things like that, there were some of the factors of the funding model. And in case you're wondering, the funding is coming from the spending plan that was approved back in September, that line item of $3 million, which was investing back into ourselves and into our students.
Excellent.
Great.
He's like, "Do I need all of it?"
Good morning, Chair Kidwell, trustees, President Williams, Senator Quiney Love. Happy Asian New Year. For those of you who celebrate the year of the rabbit or the cat, depending if you are north or south. We're talking a little bit about accreditation this morning, and just wanted to bring you up to speed on a couple of things going on with institutional accreditation. Most of you know, we as an institution are accredited by the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges. We've been with them since 1931. We were granted distance education approval in 2001 and bachelor's degree approval in 2001, and our accreditation was most recently affirmed in 2018. Institutional accreditation is really important. The way that higher education works in the United States is that the federal government has roughly 61 or 62 absolute requirements that higher education institutions have to follow. And these different parts, regions of the country created these regional-based accreditation institutions to accredit the colleges and universities in those areas. So that an associate's degree, a bachelor's degree, a master's degree, a doctoral degree means the same thing anywhere you travel in the United States, and that students can transfer from one to another. Or if you get an associate's degree in one, you can get a bachelor's degree at another. And so it's very important to have this whole kind of system. It's kind of like the Federal Reserve system, that it's the same standards across the country, but then within each region, to address the needs of a particular region, these regional creditors came up to basically implement those standards for institutions. And of course, it's also very important for access to federal financial aid. It sets institutional financial benchmark ratios. And my favorite one, it regulates whether or not you can have a candle in a dorm room. That's my favorite federal rule. And it doesn't matter, you can have it either way, you just have to publish what the rule is for students who move into the dorms. Anyway, just wanted to bring you up to speed on the, SACS is our institutional creditor. It's on a 10-year accreditation cycle. This is different from individual program accreditation, but we are in the middle of our 10-year cycle, and we are hitting what is called our fifth-year interim report. And so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sabrina Crawford to educate you on what's going on with the fifth-year report, because you may get questions from SACS accreditation teams about these things.
Good morning. It's always a pleasure to be here to talk to you a little bit about what's going on within the accreditation world. So we are in the middle of working on our fifth-year interim report. This is a two-year project. We started back in 2021. There are 22 sections, and since our last reaffirmation, SACS did an entire revamp of all of their standards. So we made a conscious effort in 2021, December of 2021, when they hold their annual conference, to invite all of the potential writers of the areas and the standards that we would have to reply to, to make sure that they got an opportunity to hear what the new standards sounded like, what are the best practices around it, so that they would be prepared to start writing their drafts. We also have been sending colleagues across the college to the QEP conference, which is the Summer SACS Conference. And that's really an opportunity for faculty, and Amber Esland, and others who can go and be able to share the best practices around our QEP, which has been the M4S of the Summer of Success. So our ability to import and onboard our students through a series of programs to make sure that they're ready to be college-ready. And that has now been transitioning towards our first-year experience program. So this past December, we just, we did one last check-in at the annual meeting to make sure we weren't missing anything, and we have been steadily working on all of our standards, getting them ready for draft this past December. So this is actually going to be due to SACS COC in September of 2023. It is our goal to have it ready by August before classes begin, so that we don't have to think about anything once all semester begins. And they will give us our results at the December 2023 annual meeting. This is a very busy slide, but it gives you an idea of what the breadth of this impact report actually takes place around. And a lot of it has to do with policy, but it goes everywhere from facilities, all the way down to how do we define a credit hour, to who are our leaders at the college. So it really does take an entire village. And as I'm looking around the room, I believe almost everybody here will have some role of either reviewing or helping us write. So I do want to say a huge thank you to the entire college family for being able to allow us to pull this off. And this is just a brief timeline, so you can see that what we've been doing is working on our writing teams. We meet with them once a month during the last year to make sure that they were onboard, they knew what they needed, that they could start looking for the documentation and start pulling together their standards. All of our writing teams have either gotten us a first draft or part of a first draft by this past December. And I am very fortunate to have a colleague of mine, Jennifer McBride, who's in the assessment office, who is kind of like my right-hand at this moment. And so she and I have been doing a deep dive on each of these drafts to make sure that they're looking good, reaching out, getting clarification. We've already reached out to our web developer to start building out our website. And so we feel like we're very much on target to meet this, and I'm sure that if there are questions, that we will be reaching out to you as well.
So this is all just to reassure you that we're on track in our current accreditation process. Again, these regional creditors or institutional creditors are a peer-based mechanism to make sure that we're all similar in terms of higher education institutions. And so you may get trustees from other institutions who end up interviewing you when we do these visits and things like that. So just want to make sure you're well aware of that. Also want to talk about transitions. So in 2019, the U.S. Department of Education removed the regional restrictions of institutional creditors. So SACS COC, the Southern Association, of which we're part of, runs from, ran from Virginia to Texas on states that touch water, essentially, were the members in our region. And when they changed this, removed the regional restriction, it meant that schools can start looking at, instead of just looking at who are your neighbors, who are the, who are the creditors that are developing their implementation of these federal guidelines in a way that makes most sense from a mission perspective? And so Senate Bill 7044, in the last legislative session, actually changed state law, it used to require that we had to belong to SACS as a regional creditor, now says that we must belong to an institutional creditor. And that opens up essentially the opportunity for institutions to shop for creditors. We also, as part of that legislation, a task force was created of representatives from the State University System and the Florida College System, of which I was blessed to be one of the representatives on for the Florida College System. And we interviewed the five other regional creditors that would accredit the institutions that are in Florida. And the reason we did that is we are charged with figuring out what's best for us individually, but one of the things that we, as institutions, agree on is reciprocity, transferability of degrees is really important. And that's much easier if we're all part of the same accreditation body. So while we're all looking at this individually, collectively, we want to be with the other institutions looking at these issues. The State Board of Education and the Board of Governors reviewed the feedback from the State University System and Florida College System interviews and materials, and charged all the institutions to move forward as best aligned with mission and goal. And so we met with the Higher Learning Commission, which is essentially the upper Midwest from Michigan to Arizona, the Middle States Commission, which is Virginia through New York, New England, which is everything east of New York, Northwest, which is Montana westward up to Alaska, and Western Association of Schools and Colleges, which is California, Hawaii, Guam, American Samoa, Federated States of Micronesia, Republic of the Faroe Marshall Islands, you know, some of the U.S. specific territories. So it gives you a sense of who the other bodies are. What we came out of that was a recommendation or a preference for the Higher Learning Commission as an institution. And the reason we're looking at the Higher Learning Commission is that their nomenclature is the most similar to SACS, but their approach is much more developmental. And what we mean by that is, instead of if you break a rule, you're in trouble, it's if you break a rule, what's your plan to fix it? How can we help you to fix it? And that made the most sense to us, because we, you know, the common understanding is very important, but a more positive approach to this seemed to make the most sense to us. It would be the minimum amount of disruption, and to be frank, Higher Learning Commission was actively courting the institutions in Florida, and so they actually created the fast-track process for institutions that are moving from state to state. You may be following in the news, Hope Barrett Smith recently moved from Middle States to New England. The University of Arizona has now petitioned to move from Higher Learning Commission to the Western Association of Colleges, Schools and Colleges. So this move is happening nationwide, so it's not just a Florida thing, but this is all going on throughout all this. So just wanted to make you aware, as we go through the fifth-year reaffirmation process with SACS, we're also starting the initial approach to moving to the Higher Learning Commission. And with that regard, in a month and a half, Higher Learning Commission has their next day of their meeting, and they actually have a couple of sessions specifically for institutions that are looking to move to the Higher Learning Commission, and so we will be participating in that. There is a process that we have to go through with the federal government for this. We notify them of our intent. We apply for membership with a different regional creditor. We receive membership of that regional creditor. We have to maintain our existing accreditation through the process. And then there's a side note, just to make sure you're all aware, we are doing this voluntarily. I have recommended to the president that we make this move. This is not a dictate that we have to move to the Higher Learning Commission. This is the approach that makes sense, and so hopefully we'll take that under advisement as we review this recommendation to move forward with the move to the Higher Learning Commission. And I believe that is it for questions.
I do believe that we know that all Florida schools will have to make this move. And many of us are going to be dual-enrolled, I mean dual-accredited, because if you drop one day of your accreditation and wait for the next one, you lose your financial aid capability. So we're going to have to have two for a short period of time. And the commissioner pulled the college presidents in a meeting with the Board of Governors presidents to confirm that we're all looking at HLC or HCL, which one is Higher Learning Coalition, to make sure we don't jump ship into a different accrediting group that the universities won't accept. And so they pulled us all together to make sure that we were on the same page. And so this is going to be real, like fun, you know?
For those of us nerds, we love this stuff. We really...
Yeah, that'd be Sabrina or somebody. For our faculty and staff, Higher Learning Coalition is the closest to SACS that I believe we could have possibly gotten. we could have possibly gotten. We'll have to go through re-credentialing and some other things, but we're in this together, and we have to make the move. So the sooner we can start looking at how to make that move, the better. It'll help us with our planning going forward, and it'll move the institution instead of us waiting to the last minute and finding ourselves at a loss in between. So we're going to make that move. There are other colleges that have already sent their letters to the government, already started moving, we haven't gotten that far yet, but we wanted to bring it to the board and the college family and hear your questions, your thoughts, advice, concerns.
She feels like she's leaning on me.
If you're going to give me the microphone, I'll do it. I mean, I think this just shows what we always do, right? We're forward-thinking, and we're looking at what's best for the college long-term, not just what we've always done. And so I'm glad, Dr. Leo Trout, you're leading the charge in this with the help of many others, of course, and, you know, I'm hoping it also makes us a little more efficient in this process over time, because from what I understand and from what I've heard from Sabrina over the years, it's a very cumbersome process, and I'm sure this will be too, but hopefully somewhat simpler in other ways as we move forward.
The one part I would like to mention is, SACS is very prescriptive, so these are the rules, and this is how you do this. HLC is a little less prescriptive, so the rules are similar, but how you do it, there's a more ability to define in a mission-appropriate way how you accomplish those.
All right. I believe we have completed our workshop for today. Any questions from the audience on accreditation or the budget? Speak now or forever hold your peace. All right. Thank you so much. Workshop adjourned.
Great job, as always.